I was going to call Bill.
Can you guys give us one minute?
Yes.
All right, appreciate it.
No, carry it over. Texting, he said he's only like.
Very good.
He likes those grand entrance. It's long we have started, man.
I'll tell you, it was a mess last week, last couple of weeks. By the way, thank you all for your prayers, I appreciate it, and your well wishes and good calls. And I really, I really do appreciate that, it's, it's, it's been a rough way the last couple of weeks, but I tell you, I have nothing to complain about considering we had all the tragedy here with the weather. You know, I woke up. That's good enough for me. So let's do this thing. Get it started, folks, thank you all for coming. We're going to begin with our invocation from Reverend Greg Swisher of the Calvary Baptist Church, Father by our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, we come to you on this day that you've given us, we thank you. Thank you for the sunshine, thank you for the display of your sovereignty with this eclipse event. Father, you let us know each day you are in charge, you are the sovereign ruler of the universe. This council tonight meets under your authority, God, as we know that you have given us the gift of government. You give us the gift of those who are capable of leading. I pray for this council, especially as they swear a new member in tonight. I pray, God, that they will lead the city of Oak Hill with transparency, with integrity, with compassion, with humility, that they will make decisions that are fair and honest in the best interest of all, where they have been entrusted and enabled by you. So Father, as a citizen of Oak Hill, I thank you for these men and women on the council and in these departments represented here tonight. And I pray, God, your watch care, your loving kindness, your protection upon each one. Bless the proceedings tonight as ideas are shared and as governance takes place. Pray, God, all of this into your mighty hands as we invoke your presence tonight. In Jesus' name.
Of the United States of America. To the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I believe we have somebody joining us today, would that be you, Mr. Buskas?
Yes, sir.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure?
Absolutely, absolutely, right.
I knew you were the man for the job when we had our conversation back in the summer.
Sure.
Please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Tim Buskas, do solemnly swear.
I, Tim Buskas, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the City of West Virginia.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties as a council member in the city and for the city of Oak Hill, Fayette County, West Virginia.
Probably execute the duties and responsibilities of the City of Oak Hill.
Fayette County, West Virginia.
Fayette County, West Virginia.
The best, to the best of my skill and judgment, so help me God.
To the best of my skill and judgment, so help me God.
All right, subscribe and sworn to meet before in the City of Oak Hill, Fayette County on Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty four, Charles Briscoe Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Now call the order, this meeting of the Oak Hill City Council, April eighth, twenty 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 four, six P. M. We'll have a roll call.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Present.
Counselors from Ward One, Terry Van Buskirk.
Present.
Roger Evans.
Present.
Diana Janey.
Present.
Counselors from Ward Two, Tim Buskas.
Present.
E.T. Elder.
Here.
Chris Gill.
Here.
Councilor at Large, Bill Hanabas.
Here.
All right. Thank you, folks. Chief Wismann, do you have a presentation to make?
Well, we wanted to bring before you our two newest members, so that everybody could see their young faces and get to know them. First, we have Kayden Newton. He's been with us for about a month and a half, a month. And then we, probably everybody knows the next one. We have Seth Crozier, Jeremy Crozier's son. He just got sworn in today. Both are not certified, they'll be going to the police academy in June. And they'll be ready to hit the street when they get their training done, but we wanted to let everybody meet.
Once you guys finish the academy, one of you please bring me a hat. Okay, you guys have anything to say, officers?
Uh, thanks for having us, yeah, absolute pleasure meeting y'all.
All right.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. And please bring me a hat back from the academy.
Sounds good.
All right, moving along, we'll have our reading and approval of minutes.
I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Those who have properly moved the second of the minutes be accepted, all those in favor? All opposed? Is there a treasurer's report?
I'll make a, I should accept treasurer's report.
Those who have properly moved the treasurer's report be accepted, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, the only piece of correspondence that we've gotten is just basically an invitation. I'm going to try to go tomorrow, tomorrow night, the O H Middle School Creative Arts Showcase at five thirty, and then they're doing a wrestling event. You'll know more about that on April twelfth at six thirty, meet and greet. Uh, does it tell me where this is? I was gonna assume it's, yeah, it is at the middle school, so if you guys want to meet me out there at five thirty or five fifteen, that'll be just fine. Uh, this is from a young lady named Colleen Treadway. Remember that. Now we have our citizens' comments, we will begin with John Legg.
Most of you all know who I am, I was told you all had a short agenda this evening, and I'll make it short, sweet, to the point, just like me. I've got a zoning issue with the property that I own on Main Street of Oak Hill, I've got four point ninety seven acres there. It's formerly the Bashin Junkyard, but I feel like it's the most improved piece of land that's been in Oak Hill in the last several decades. I know I've only got three minutes, and I know there's procedures to this, but I was told by my grandfather that the best solution to a problem is good communication. And I want to make sure that each and everybody here this evening is aware of my concern and my problem and my discontent in the remedy of a special use permit. I'm asking for this property to be rezoned. Dave Perry made a decision here tonight that I come in here with this in front of you all. Whether it was wrong, whether it was messed up, misinterpreted, whatever. I don't feel like that I should have to go through a bunch of redoing of paperwork. I feel like the city should get together and help me with this situation, and I'm asking you all to look at this document right here. I think I've got enough copies for you all to pass it around. And I'm asking you all to get together with the zoning board. I'm asking you all to contact me and let me know what your decision is and what your feelings are on rezoning of this property so that it can be done and put behind all of us as peacefully and quickly as possible. I appreciate all of you all. Most of the people here have my cell number, I would be glad to sit down and talk to you all, the ones that has the desire to discuss my issues. Appreciate y'all and everybody.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Legg. Do you have any questions, counsel, from Mr. Legg, before we move on? Anyone? Thank you, Mr. Legg. We belong to unfinished business. I will have myself, folks, uh, Peyton Lane. Peyton Lane.
So I'm I'm proud of what Oak Hill has done, I want to say that first, and I'm real proud of how much we progressed from Gateway to what supposedly the Coolwood Smock Town. And you guys, I want to thank all y'all for being part of that. My concern is that it's bad enough I gotta live in a some lord next to me drug neighborhood right over here off a school in Washington, but I had a lot of issues for quite a while now of the grants trucks coming through our neighborhood, it is not probably zoned for commercial use. I have a little short video that I would love for all y'all to look at and see my concern. That's the best way that I can, I'd like to not see trucks go through there at all. If we could watch that video, you could see why.
Bear with me, I gotta make sure I get this out.
You know, and I've been hit and run quite a bit.
Hey, guys, you're not supposed to come here. Yeah. If you got the handle on that.
And denying, we got a denial letter about the, so my wife's out of vehicle. I, I pretty much just patched it back together. So also, one of my roommates at one particular time worked for the city of Mount Hope, and they totally totaled and hit and ran that vehicle. Mount Hope was able to find that and take care of that, but this is a repeating thing that has happened over and over, and there's no accountability. Grants is just as bad, and I don't, I could go on and on, but if we, you, you got a lot of stuff to take care of, I just wanted to share that.
Any questions for Mr. Logan?
Thank you, though.
I don't want to be a complainer. But you know that thousands of dollars out.
Did you talk to any of the grants and management, or you just talked?
Uh, they said, that's our truck drivers, we can't be helped, that, that's not our problem. And we've got shopping carts all over the place, and you know, all over town, we're shopping carts, and it's just, it's a really bad scene on that section, I bought him a means. I want to be a proud Oak Hill person, but it's kind of hard right now. Work hard for everything I have. And I'm going to C D L classes right now for Fayette County, and really, if you're a C D L driver and you hit and run, you're gonna lose your life. You can't even say name of who it is or anything. But that was my, over my three minutes, so thank you for listening.
We have been lucky into that, and we'll continue.
We have more signs also, those are not approved signs.
But does that look like M D I hit us, because they said we could have, you know, I'm a videographer, they said that we
Yeah, I see they moved it out.
And if you hit something, you're gonna feel that.
Thank you very much, Mr., we'll definitely look into it. Okay, we're gonna move into our unfinished business, number one, update on planning a trademark for the city of Oak Hill Logan.
Um, I have gone into the website to apply for that trademark. And so it's just, I just have to go in, upload the logo, and and do it all in one sitting. That's what my goal will be, but it's taking right now about a year to hear anything on the trademarks, that's you know, quickly, right now, they're looking at applications. It does take a little bit of time, but as I hear things, so. And I put a document in SharePoint that just tells some of the things about the trademark and that stuff, if you all can kind of give you an idea. It just cost about, I think it's two hundred fifty dollars or something. Maybe before the next election.
All right, unfinished business item number two, now update on procedures for selling the former B B and T.
I have a document in here from, um, John Stump. And so this is what he says, I, you all maybe haven't seen this, because I just got it, sent the email today and put it on it, but uh, so the easiest way to handle this is for the city and the building commission to agree that the building commission lists the building for sale. And that each pass a resolution stating that it's, it'd be put up for sale, and the sale price shall not be less than the outstanding amount of the bonds plus the cost, so the outstanding amount of the bonds is close to one point five million. And the city shall keep on making the payments, like we have been, and that then you agree that the lease shall terminate upon sale. The building commission lists the building for sale. And then whenever someone wants to buy the building, um, then we'll have to determine whether to accept it or counter all however you want to do that. And it says maybe delegate that to the mayor and chairperson. And then he lists some things to consider, like who will be the listing agent, and how will you select whoever that is? The sale of the building could take years, which you want to think about having an auction instead of selling it. And you also have to think about how can we lock in that decision to sell the building if council changes in the, and it's still for sale. So those are things that he would look into more ahead and sell, or go ahead and start this process. So that's what he says, it has to be, I think that we have to say I think we have to list that as the sale price, now I don't, what I read, it's not what you have to take for that, but that's what you have to list as a
That's what's owed on. If you sold it for less, or you the city would have to make up the difference to get back to that one point five. If you sold it for one, then the, I mean, the city would have, whatever it may be, right?
Well, we don't owe that much, don't we?
We still owe we have been, but we only made interest payments. So it's only, um, we owe one, one, four, nine, two. It's not very much that we've paid.
So if, if this process takes years potentially, and we continue to make for a long time principally interest payments.
Now we're making principal.
Yeah, principal, but we're still making interest payments. The longer it takes, the the more the city hemorrhages. I, I don't want to cut her nose off despite her face, but it seems like if we can do this in a reasonable amount of time, and I, I know you can't sell within thirty days, you have to market this and and make sure you try to find viable buyers, but I would be for selling it quicker than taking years.
Than auction.
Yeah. And I, and we may need professional help with that, uh, to market that or a real estate agency or whatever, but I think, I don't know why, I mean, I don't doubt it, but I, I don't know why it would take years to market it and sell it through the building commission.
I guess it may not, he just says he, that it could take years. We borrowed one point five million so that we could fix it. It's, and we paid six hundred seventy five thousand, and we've, some month, well, we had to pay the engineers. Uh, we went ahead and did some stuff to the elevator. Those people were in and out of there and it needed fixed, I would have to fix that. So we put several thousand into the elevator. But all we've done.
Fixed the roof, did you? Oh, yeah. Yeah, fixed the roof.
Paid for, um, asbestos, yeah. That guy did. Yeah, and he spoles and
Did he go back and fix it?
So y'all would like for me to check in with John Stump about the auction?
I, I agree with that too, I mean, because longer we hang on to the board, we're gonna just granted, um, auctioning it may not be everyone they want, but sit down and just keep paying, 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 and know that you're not getting out of it. There, there is some money too, Paul, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. There is some money that we haven't spent that we have that we're making payments, so, so it's not
About half a million.
Half a million, so we're looking at a million, not one.
We put that in back there and
I think it would cost a lot to redo that financing because
But it'd be, like I, like I said, the longer the wait to pay it, that, that payment is coming out of that five hundred bucks, so the the bigger the loss will take.
Make a vote, do we move forward or do? Move on to the new business, number three, the consideration of the request of Saint Spirit of Paul Catholic School to have a Cinco de Mayo dinner celebration that involves serving wine on May third, twenty twenty four, and would you, Ms. Diana Light? Here, talk about this?
We're just looking, uh, to have a special one day permit to serve wine with our dinner. This event is a fundraiser for our school, for the Saint Spirit of Paul Catholic School. And we did last year, and we have that permit, it goes with our dinner, we don't serve, I mean, we don't sell it, and nobody is allowed to go outside with that, uh, drink that they will have. And nobody is allowed to go outside with that uh drink that they will have with their dinner. We serve a buffet with it. Between six P M to eight um thirty P M. Where it's kids involved uh from the school that they have um. The presentations, Mexican dance and singing, uh but it's a big fundraiser for us.
And the school did this last year renovations.
Yeah, we did it last year. This is this will be your second year.
As the and and I don't know, I'm just curious, as the. And I I I'm assuming the school and the. Uh the church and almost approved that, but has the dioceses of Willing or Charleston approved that coming into their school?
Yeah, they know. Uh we have different events on the cafeteria and if they have a permit. Uh to serve alcohol, yeah, where. It is not for selling, of course. I mean, it's just part of our dinner. It's part of uh. From the buffet that we're serving and it's not a cocktail or it's not any. Other kind of drink, it's just. Uh it's white at this time. Last year was sangria, this time it's gonna be white wine.
I s- I spoke to some of the people that attend there. They they don't have a kid in the school. They don't do. These were just church people. They didn't have anything. To do with the school and and they were not for it because they felt like it would cost. Cast a negative image. They said they would purchase tickets and actually come to the dinner if it didn't. Their question to me, they that when they were speaking to me about it was, could you do that same? Dinner fundraiser and have the non-alcoholic.
Uh, yes.
Sangria or whatever there.
Could, but uh some people would like to have a drink with their dinner. What is uh Cinco de Mayo without margaritas? If you can say it that way. So part of our celebration is just to have one drink with your authentic Mexican food that we will serve that day. And we don't want to serve margarita. We just want to serve wine, white wine.
I think the issue that I want, the ones that I spoke with was that it was in the school. And the church property, they got like cast a negative image.
Well, we have wine on our church too, that is part of our uh religious process, but it's not for having a party and it's not. For people going outside and or it's not for people to have too many drinks. It's just because with one drink that you have with your dinner. Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two years ago too, I didn't know, it's just.
Oh, it may have happened. I remember specifically last year.
Questions, counsel, I want one.
That's what the alcohol we see commission says that it's taken, it's taking place in our city.
Um I make a motion, uh I move. To approve the request of the Saint Peter Paul Catholic Church to have a Cinco de Mayo dinner celebration involved serving wine. On May third with understanding that A B C Commission is fully aware.
I second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? I just have it, it is carried. Thank you. Is this number four? I'm sorry, okay, we're opposed, I'm sorry, it's five to two. I can't count, folks, you got it. I I'm still a minute. Anyway, the eyes. Before request the planning committee review the definition of addiction treatment center.
This came out of our discussions with um generations. To be allowed to move their facility straight. He said that council said at that meeting that they would. Consider the definition was broad for addiction treatment center and that you ask running commission to review. Then you want that.
I'm an ex officio member. Yes, ma'am.
Have you had any discussions on that?
This is one of those um weird spots that we never expected to be in, guys. Um my official position is, yeah, we can see that there's some problems, um maybe with the way that it's defined in our code. But. Hasn't broken us yet and I would actually reserve this to be looked at. When we do the complete zoning overview with the West Virginia Law Clinic. After we can complete the ten year comprehensive plan.
I disagree with that. I think it should be handled now. Um they're waiting. Generations is waiting for something to happen, so either we need to do it or not. So they will know what to do.
Well, I make a motion that we don't change nothing, run in law, and let it be as it is.
I second that.
So probably move that everything remains the same. All those in favor? All opposed?
And I I'd like to. For a comment, say that I I'm not sure that I would be for or against any change, but but I.
I'd put my vote in. See what avenue else we could have took and maybe help me get any of this without.
Nice have it, five to two, motion is carried.
So the next agenda, I'm gonna need to put. How to handle our addiction treatment centers now. Because that has to come. And we talked about this before, when the street pharmacy sells nicotine gum, addiction treatment soon. It's every. Gold tissues doing counseling. So we're gonna have to have to do something. To stop it. The hospitals has addiction treatment center. People are now having addiction treatments, saying that they are now. Treating. Treating addicts, so. We have to deal with that. I mean, it's come to that. Yeah. We're not gonna do, if we're not gonna allow it, we've got to enforce it and we must stop it. So with your permission, I'd like to put that on the next. I didn't think we were brought into the phone on this. I mean, I'm the one that asked for the definition. So I think I voted yes when I should have voted no.
Decide the use of the opioid settlement funds. They giving us guidelines.
It's in there, so I'll put all that in our packet. I put that M O U um. Department letter. Of the tracking work from the auditor's office. And those list all the uses and I think, can you pull up the M O U? I was doing that highlighted. Well, so. That is what says um. To provide substance use avoidance and awareness education, to engage in enforcement. To curtail the sale, which is what. Cost us most to engage in to curtail the sale, distribution promotion. Or use of opioids and other drugs. To decrease the oversupply of listen and illicit opioids and to support recovery from addiction to be performed by qualified providers. As as it's further set forth in exhibit A. Then there's some. This tells about how that we have to um to submit a financial report.
That's in April thirty, so we have to have that in now before this, it is April thirtieth of this month.
I have to check on that. I think it is. So right now we haven't done anything, so that'll be. But also it says about law enforcement. Funding for law enforcement efforts, the same thing that the other one said. And also somewhere, and I don't know if I highlighted it, but it says that fifty percent. Of the funds can be used uh for law and for for. Reimbursing the city for efforts made in that law enforcement. So we can take half of that and apply it to funds that we've already spent. On preventing uh the sale or the use of. So we have two members in a drug task, in a drug task. All of their salaries are eligible. We can go back and reimburse ourselves for that if we want to, if he needs that to go forward. Um with their salaries. We can um. Use it to pay regional jail fees. We can use it for anything that. She, you know, equipment that he would have, he would like to have for to prevent. Opioids and selling drugs.
Does that include like P P E for your officers? Personal protective equipment, whatever they.
Hey, I'm sure good. Uh and it's pretty, it's pretty broad because we've dealt with it for years over. Uh seized money, assets that we seize. It's kind of like on that. On those guidelines there, but it's pretty broad, you know, cruiser. You say, for instance. Of course, you know, police officers have to have crew. Have to have guns. All all their equipment uh should be. Allowed under that. And again, we can back up with the fifty percent and just. Dedicate it for what we've already spent. We can take however much of the other fifty percent, that's all up to you all, going forward and what we're gonna spend. In law, right to me, does that?
Yes, and so there are several agencies or. Um other items that you can use that for education, use education. Prevention, it means for um. Harm reduction. So any of these things that people are dealing with or helping recovery. That can also be used, that money can be used for that. So we can. Also give, make a contribution to those people that know how to do it instead of us trying to do it themselves. They already know. How to help people. Or, you know, like uh last month, we had Katie here talking about some things that they do. To help pe- kids at a young age to prevent and prevent. Yes, that's what what you all need to decide is how much do you want to spend on that part of it because we can spend it. We're not gonna have a problem spending it. On enforcement. What part do you want to spend to give out to other agents?
So manager, what what type of deadline do you have on this decision?
I don't know of any. Do you feel?
I do not know of any deadline.
I didn't see that in any of the stuff that I read.
Well, you know, I. Chief was a nice groupie on this needs term, but uh. You know, we have a, we've been fighting a war on drugs. The whole nation, this state, and we're not winning. We're not getting any. And I, you know, I don't, when I first heard about this, so I I thought maybe. It would be time for us to think outside the box, do something that's more effective than what we're already doing. And and I think what's being proposed is spend more money than what we've been doing. I don't think it's worth it. I think we're. I don't know much about drugs, but I know a little bit about horror. You have to strength, change your strategy up with it. Also, I disagree with spending where, you know, fifty percent on law enforcement, but. I think we as a council need to think of or. I don't know, like. The decision, uh that's just me.
You can do that, I mean. And also the regional, there's, we have um a region. That also gets money and their main concern is to give it. To the every people.
Yeah, that's the only thing they can do with the fortune of it, and they have received that, and I'm I'm assuming that they're passing it out or. Or getting their game plan. I mean, they. The way I kind of took it is this reimbursement for your law enforcement efforts that you have spent and and maybe. Some agree with you, some don't, maybe wasted money on trying to enforce it, but. You know, I don't think we're gonna stop trying to enforce drug laws. But like I said, like she said, there's a re, there's a whole region that that got a big chunk of money, a whole lot more than what we got. Uh that is, that is dedicated to prevention, recovery. Treatment, oh, you know, that side of.
There's a little statement in there from. There's a little statement in there from Chris Young. Very first one, and he just outlined. That they've started, they started with the drug task force in two thousand thirteen, or Oak Hill started in two thousand thirteen. And then we added another position. And that they have been in the lead investigators on nine hundred and fifty-five investigations. And that doesn't count if they have assisted other. I just had him to write that, so we would have something, the auditors, if we do use that. Cause they need to know our reasoning for it and that we can show when it started and.
Now, did the county get the same thing like what we got, the cities?
No, they got a different percentage, it was based on our population and did you see that email sent you?
I did not. Cause we're wondering exactly what they based it on.
Send I had that.
But the county, for instance, the county got more money than we did, I think.
What I was asking.
Her nose. He was sitting back there, what she's reading. It was, it was at least double, if not more than what we did, uh, Beckley PD got. I wanna say about five times what we got. Maybe more than that. I think Bill got about half of what we got. But again, that, this region that's dedicated their funds to, to the treatment and prevention side of it. That, I I don't know what they got, but I know. Did you ever see that percentage?
Know what they got.
We're not allowed to go to emergency services, like what about police officers? What about our fire department, our E and Ts could send that funnel over into that?
I don't know about fire. She had some kind of.
That first.
Proof that it showed it was.
I'll do Mount Hope, I guess.
I've never heard of any distribution like that. You guys save lives as well, I mean.
It's not drug free, no straight sun.
As we roll up on an accident. At, you know, car wreck or something, and there's that stuff in there or somebody's, that's usually.
That would be like law enforcement, my ass is with it. Your fine. Does anybody, uh, know what other municipalities or our county or other counties are considering? A lot of the counties I heard of, a lot of sheriffs are are going to apply it to their jail bills, I have heard that. Summersville PD is spending it mainly on equipment. I talked to Fabio. And that's going through the reimbursement part of it that, you know.
And I, I don't mean, uh, uh, tease about you being.
Oh, you're.
I just.
I stay mad at yous.
That's they mad at you too. But I, you know, I just, I, I just want sincerely. Tell, uh, that we can, uh, if we can, and it might not be, uh, money or.
Have we changed the law where the courts get off? Uh, they seem like when they go to court, they drop the case, or I mean, nothing's ever done, back out on the street.
Else or little people already, so it's.
And can we have a workshop sometime, that where we can sit and collaborate with these ideas and? Maybe Chief can bring some of his stuff, maybe reach out to those people, whatever, see what we can spend it and. Cause I just, I mean, I'd hate to try to make a decision tonight on what percentage we're gonna. Where I were gonna. Yeah, I kind of like to hear some ideas of, you know. Say, I'd, I'd like to do this, 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 and this with this much, you know, this much for prevention, or, you know, somebody might say we want. And maybe do a signage program in our parks, you know, for advertisement or something, you know what I mean, just. Something there, I'm thinking out loud, I'll.
I would want more information about it before I make a decision, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly not.
And I, I kind of agree with what Bill was asking about, you know, do we know what the other municipalities may be trying to get theirs, I mean. Right, we don't have to mirror off somebody else, but it would give us more information of what we may be able to do with it.
Do you have, has Beckley decided on any?
Any questions?
Is there a deadline when we have to notify how we're going to appropriate these funds or?
Motion to table this item?
I made a motion to table.
A second.
This has been properly moved, second that we table decision to use the opioid settlement funds, all those in favor? Or opposed? It's carried. Number six, police department staffing issues. Chief, for you, any more to say?
The last item on the.
That is, uh, well, just the four chapters.
I would, I would, maybe if you just go ahead and do reports. That if we would go into executive session to talk about number six. Maybe. If he was at the end of the meeting, other than dismissing. Instead of everybody trying to fit back here, we could just do it out here, if if that's feasible.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, we, uh, get, can we get a motion to accept all of the department's force?
I made a mention that we accept the department.
Second.
A second.
Motion to probably move all the department, we accept it, all those in favor?
Uh, or opposed?
Um, any council comments?
That one, I had a lot of candy reaching out to me. I know why we gotta close where we're dumping the brush and all that stuff. Is there any other alternative with the storms we've had and all the branches and lands that we?
It's April fifteenth, it's a slow state.
Cause we can't predict storms and stuff, and every time we get one, branches are down, trees are down.
This was, I knew this was gonna come to a, to a day. We're gonna have to do something. He didn't have a permit to dump bricks into the park completely.
Do we have any other properties that we can choose?
Those can burn it in their yard, they can put it in a little small pile and burn it, they can haul it to the landfill.
Indians in town, and we have campfires in everybody's front yard, it's all that.
Then they can haul it to the landfill, they don't charge enough laughing.
But they gotta get the.
Yeah, get a permit to burn.
I think the fire department's gonna get called out.
That's why they want that raised.
Any other comments?
I just have a lot of people concerned that if they have fires, and some of these people don't have, they're like, they're doing this, it's. I can see the city going up in flames. On the front yard, back shot. It's, they're really concerned.
And, and, but I'm, I'm, you know. About it is, you know, it's, it's not the city's responsibility, but those just do nothing. There are no other, there's no other town. We are. But the E, the EP says, the more, you say, yes, sir. One time, them tickets got big, they get to.
So it's not just, it's the DEP, cause people there are listening to this, I want you to. While we.
We're not permitted to dump brush. And and a lot of your contractors is what's killing. Their contractors bringing it from Beckley, oh, they had real endeavors. We stopped them, and we told them, told, told them. But on the weekends where they know there's nobody around, that's when they're bringing it in. But when we come back Monday, we're spending eight hours trying to. Do stuff to even get. They just fill them. They're bringing, they're bringing big logs, not just little tiny stuff, they're bringing trees. You wonder how in the world they got it loaded to get it down there.
We use some of this, so I, I point that, I wouldn't say that, where they get cameras and and.
We have a police officer that lives down there.
And they broke tickets, it might have been arrested, yeah?
You're, you're, you're allowed to dump it.
Yeah, they're allowed to dump it right now.
But see, he don't know what contractor.
Yeah.
Cause it will come in there.
And he works midnight shift and he sleeps probably.
Father down.
Between eight and four in the daytime.
It's, it's, it's changed, and everybody don't like changing. It's not, 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 gives the people who live in the town, but you gotta take care of your own. So if there's gonna come a place, you all gotta have places to get rid of your feed. They're out doing jobs and they didn't get rid of dirt, rocks, we're permitted for that stuff, but we're not permitted for. You don't have a place to dump, then you're all gonna have to take it and drive it to the long and field, we're finding a place to dump. So then it's gonna cost the citymen. Get rid of their stuff.
And the main thing is that park is under those restrictions because we have. Funding, we, our original funding was from that land and water conservation fund, and it can only be used for recreation. So it's not only that we have to stop, need to do it now, but we also have. Salt storage there and things, other things that we can't have in there that we have to.
Is any of that salvageable or like mulch or anything like that, or is it like very balanced meetings?
There, there's the, there's the big pile of mulch that's down there, that we'll give whoever wants. If everybody wants it, because it's not real good, I mean, it comes to a chipper. If you had a big tub grinder like Beckley's got, it makes a nice mulch out of it, just run it to a chipper, don't. It's dead. So, you know, it's been laying there for several years now, it's putting the compost down pretty good.
Yeah, the way of, of gating that off, I mean.
We, as soon as the fifteenth comes, we are putting gates up, signs up, adding cameras. Cause I told him, I said, until everybody gets it, there is gonna be a backup to the gate dump. And take the gate down, you'll get the machines and pick it up and load that bit of. Everybody's brushed up, all over the sides of the roads. Contractors charge folks to come and clean their yard, to haul it off, they do, and then they're bringing it and dumping it on us. The city, the breed, and it's not right. You know? It's not, shit, it's not the city's responsibility to take care of the contract.
Any council comments or anyone?
Mayor, I'd like to remind everyone that, uh. This Saturday, this coming Saturday at one PM, there is a guided tour in Beelzebub Park. You know, I want to compliment, uh, Sativa on all the events you've lined up, and that's the upcoming event for. Beelzebub Park, and there's, there's other events planned and, and, uh. Am I leaving out anything, Josh?
I don't think so, Bill, thanks.
Okay, but thank you, I appreciate all the effort. Many city parks.
What time is that?
One PM. Saturday at the needed, the needles of parking lot.
Any future agenda items, folks? Or announcements?
Yeah, I wanna let you all know that I will be retiring in July. My last official day here will be June the eleventh.
Make a motion that we resent his retirement.
Did we have the, uh. BB and T building back on the agenda to complete upon it, council?
And I would. Make sure that, so.
Yes, I'd love to workshop, if everybody else is anything.
For the opioids?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm really in favor of that too, that would give us a little bit more insight.
I am too.
Let me see what I can get.
And on the announcements there, next, this next meeting is on April seventeenth, that is typo right?
It's really the sixteen.
Sixteen.
I fixed it on.
Just so that everyone knows it, it is on the sixteenth.
It's on the sixteenth.
It's the later levy, it won't take long, it takes a few weeks. I just have to see if I can get somebody to tell you this.
All right, folks, well, um, you want to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss our, uh, this problem matters?
Not a motion.
Second, we're simply moving, we're moving this department staff and issues into executive session. We're not in, I guess.
Yes, sir, yes, I'll see you Saturday.
That sounds good, bro.
What's up, man?
Good evening, everyone still with us? We have ended our executive session and it was to discuss the Police Department staffing issues. We are now back to regular council session. So I believe we are close to the end. Do we have any further comments from anyone? Our announcements, our next meeting is on Tuesday, April 16th, 6:00 PM till late 11:00. Our regular meeting will be Monday, I'm sorry, May 13th, 2024, that may be Monday. And if we don't have any further information or questions, you should consider ourselves adjourned.